And begin our.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we want to come to you and thank you for giving us the help to be here tonight to make these decisions for our Board of Education. Lord be with us as we make these decisions and just watch over us as we return home in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, we'll begin our November the 2nd Lincoln County School Board meeting. First item I want to announce is for the minutes is we will have two board members, Ms. Veronica King and Mr. Sammy Tucker, that is joining us via the Zoom or webcam per the Governor's Executive Order 65. They are able to participate in vote on any matter before us tonight and just wanted you to know that. So there will be seven board members count as a vote. We'll have one absent. With that being said, do I have a motion to consider approval of the October 1st, 2020 board minutes? Mr. Posey moves to approve. Mr. Dunn second. All in favor, please say aye. Consider approval of agenda per policy 1.403. Dr. Heath?
Yeah, you had the addition of reimbursing the middle schools football. You can put that there. I don't have anything else.
I told, let's see. Is it A? Oh, I'm sorry. Can we move item seven up to B or the next item on the agenda? I forgot we had a couple of issues and I know this meeting is going a little longer, so I'm going to move it up. And that's consider accepting bids for the sale of surplus property at Stone Bridge Academy.
That'd be 12, no?
What did I say? Seven?
Yeah, yeah, that's good though.
Well, it's 2020. Sorry. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
We didn't need a motion on that approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion approved. I'm sorry.
Make motion approve.
Mr. Dunn, I second. Ms. Haynes second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carries seven, one absent. And my correct, we do not have, well, let's just go to A first. I'll get back hurt up eventually. The item A is considering the reimbursement of the middle schools playing at Lincoln County High School. The cost of the game, if they utilize it during the regular season was $150 a game and each one of them paid $37.50 for one bowl game, LCHS. The fee Highland Rim was $487.50. Unity's fee was $637.50. Flintville's fee was $187.50 and South Lincoln's fee was $637.50 for a total of $1,009.50. And I'm making the motion that we reimburse that back to the middle schools so that's not a lying item to them.
One thing about, before we actually make the motion, a couple of things. One is if it hadn't been invoiced yet, it might be cleaner if your motion is to pay that as a board. That way we might can just make one check to the high school. And it helps the bookkeepers out, I believe, at the schools. But they may have already been invoiced, so I think if your motion can have flexibility to either reimburse or pay upfront.
I'll modify that motion to state that if the billing has been paid by the school, the school board would reimburse them for that fee. If not, if it has hadn't been billed, then the check would just be written to Lincoln County High School. I got a second by Mr. Posey. I'm sorry. Ms. Haynes is second. I'm sorry, Mr. Posey. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Did I get a? Ms. King? I got you. All right. Seven, one absent. Thank you. Motion carries. The next item is item 12, and that is considers sets of bids of the sale of surplus property at Stone Bridge. Mr. Bradford, if you want me to?
So you had the bid results in your packet. Let me get to them real quick. Well, actually, I don't have them in my packet. It went out in the board packet.
Hold on, I've got it right.
So the high bid was?
Fifty-six and $100 or some change.
And that was Wilson's. They did have all the bid bonds and all the requirements of the bid specifications.
All right, we had a bid of Randy Cooley, $25,250. Cody and Clay Wilson, $56,100. Barry Brown was?
It looks like $30,000, but he did not have?
Right. He didn't have the support. Then you had Troy Hopkins at $50,500. Golden Nugget property, $16,000 and a dollar. And Erickson Holding, $14,144 was your bid spread across the way. As you know, we tried originally to make a switch with the cities on their portion of the Lincoln Central Academy to clean that piece of property up. After they went back and forth, it didn't meet their long-term vision of plans of what they wanted to do, so that put the property back to us. We've got the maintenance cost to kind of upkeep the property as it is. Yes, we know there's some value there, but if the structure is to be removed, I think Mr. Tucker has already gotten a bid out at Blanch to demolish the old Blanch. In his committee meeting from two months ago was $300,000. So the question goes before us is $56,100 to be free of future maintenance and upkeep? Adequate for us to accept that bid and support it boils down to. I think the old last nursing home over there brought 50. Was that correct or not?
The nursing home, I think it was less than 10, wasn't it Ricky? $6,000? $6,000.
Okay, $6,000. And what other one, was there another project brought a little higher than that?
I don't remember. That's the one that comes to mind.
But that's a comparison there of $6,000. So before us as a board is, do we want to continue? Mr. Bradford, what maintenance, utilities and all would stay on per se if you're going, if we retained it?
We had looked and Kevin and I talked, what was those utility costs Kevin? Do you have them? I can't remember.
Sure.
I was a little surprised Jackie compared when the building was up and running and even when it's been sitting idle and it's their significant cost.
Total utility cost for October 2020 was $2,835.21. So that was October comparable to October 2019 was $4,379.91.
That's considerable expense that we'll, you know, ongoing expense it appears in just with keeping some utilities on.
Before, the way I look at it, is there a need for the county to utilize that piece of property long-term to make it worthwhile, to hang on to it, hoping it fits into our plans down the road?
Dr. Heath, do you have a recommendation on this one?
Yeah, I recommend to accept the bids.
And this is for the entire acreage and everything, right?
That's correct.
I would ask that, I'm not sure the specs in the bid, was it 45 days after board approval? Do you recall?
For closing, I believe it's 45 days to close, yes.
Forty-five days. Okay, it sure helped us if it was like 65 because that'd give us fall, I mean, a Christmas break to get everything else out of there that we haven't. But we'll get on it after this meeting tonight, so.
Okay.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker, Ms. King, if y'all got any questions?
We don't think we have any further use of this building in light of the overcrowding that we have down south.
Dr. Heath?
No.
No. No.
Is this like we're considering these bids or we are going to accept one of them?
We would be, we would be accepting one tonight. If the, I don't have a motion. I'm just saying, I'm fixing to ask for a motion, what's a motion before us and then we go from that.
Can you go over the bids again?
The high bid is Wilson's at $56,100. Randy Cooley was $25,250. Troy Hopkins was $50,500. Golden Nugget property is $16,000 and a dollar. And Erickson, I think is reading, is $14,144. Those were the bids.
Okay.
But this time, do I have a motion to accept?
I'd make a motion, we accept the high bid.
Mr. Posey makes a motion to accept the high bid. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Mr. Dunn seconds. Is there any other discussion on? Row call me, please ma'am.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes?
Mr. Posey? Mr. Dunn? Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Seven and one absent.
Seven, one absent. Motion to accept the bid. Wilson is approved. We appreciate it. Thank you. We do not have any policies tonight. Is that correct?
We do not have any policies, sir.
The next item is five, and that will be the report recommendation from committee on review of pay scale, bonus stipends, and supplements, which we just concluded a committee meeting. Do I have a recommendation coming out of the committee on the pay scale or bonus or stipends?
The committee makes the recommendation that we give each employee a $500 bonus. Do you want to do these separately? I have two. Did you want to do them separately or you want to do it one at a time?
Let's do them separate.
Okay. Well, the first one is the committee makes the recommendation to give each employee $500 bonus at this time and to revisit it at the end of the year to see if it is, if we can do, maybe do another bonus at that time.
The motion is to $500 bonus to each employee regardless of whether it's teachers, support staff, or whatever. And then to read, and look at the numbers again after the first of the year to see if anything else could be done at that point in time.
Code is good.
Yeah, it's coming from committee. We're going to have to have a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Bradford? I do want to make sure, we had a list of those positions now, so when we say employee, I don't think we're meaning a sub. We're talking about our EA, support personnel.
You've got?
Our full-time personnel, I guess.
Yeah, it's attached.
Yeah, I just didn't want there to be any confusion that if we say employees, that we have a part-time sub thinking, but okay.
Is there any other discussion? If you'll row call me, please ma'am.
Mr. Posey? Mr. Dunn? Dr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Seven, one absent. Motion for the pay bonus is passed. We appreciate that. And the next item you have?
After talking with Dr. Heath and the committee, we're making the recommendation that we raise the board secretary's salary up to match the ones that surround our counties by $1,000 a year.
And that'll make it a total of $2,000 in the regular year, correct?
Correct.
And that was stipend, not salary?
That's fine. Motion is to increase the board secretary's stipend from $1,000 to a total of $2,000 in the calendar year. And that's coming to recommendation from a committee. Any other discussion? Do I have a recommendation? I mean, Row call me. I'll get there eventually tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dunn? Dr. Daniel? Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson? Mr. Tucker? Mr. Posey?
Seven and one absent. Your motion carries, recommendation of motion carries. We appreciate that. And while you're there, the? Next item is the report on your committee meeting at Blanch, future use committee, Mr. Tucker.
We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and it came out of the committee that they wanted to postpone it due to the pandemic that we're still in. They don't feel that we've got adequate information out of our community to what they feel that'd be best for that property at this time. And so they want to postpone it until maybe March of next year. And then see where we at, to where we can get more feedback, maybe a little bit more information on what we can and cannot do with the building. Is where we're at right now.
I appreciate that. Next item, Dr. Heath, is consider approval of LEA compliance report?
Annually, we have to complete a compliance report that says we're in compliance with the state laws, state board regulations, and Ms. Tallman always handles that for us. And we, as a team, look at it and we verify that we are in compliance. The state is changing the way this is done in the future, or not this part of it, but we will have to provide evidence once every three years or so of that to a state committee that'll be coming around to every school system and looking at it in the future. But for now, basically, we've verified that we are in compliance and the board has to accept that. And then we send it to the state.
Do I have a motion? To approve?
Don't move.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Posey second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carries of approval. Next item is consider approval of contracts listed of the TSBA policy maintenance contract. That's the, $3,500? $3,500 and that's where TSBA keeps up with all of our policies and us not have to engage that and keep up with it ourselves and stubber toe in case there's some liability involved. Does anybody have a recommendation or a motion?
I'd move to approve the contract.
Mr. Posey, Mr. Tucker second. Any other discussion on? All in favor, please, you know, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion to approve the contracts of seven, one. Next item is consider approval of building use requests listed below. Dr. Heath, it's Fabulous 50 Shows and the Backstage Performing Arts.
As you guys recall, our attorney recommended that the board approve all facility use agreements going forward. So a couple of months ago, Mr. Bradford helped greatly putting some numbers into our formula and helped me and I tried to help him when I could and try to figure out what our hourly costs as a school system are. And you guys approved the formulas. You approved the fee structure. So these are two of the first ones that have come in for this building. One is the Fabulous 50 Show and they submitted the, all the times that they would like to have the performance. And we put it on a spreadsheet. Thanks Amy Clement for helping setting that up. But it's a little more than they've paid in the past. But it is also at that 50% of the actual cost because it's considered a community organization, a not-for-profit. So we ask that you approve this rental fee based on this cost unless you want to modify the cost.
And do they still have to follow the Tennessee guidelines for the COVID, you know, next year also? Or do we have to set that up? I know that's not.
There would be an expectation that anybody using the building would have to.
And they understand that.
I don't recall that being part of our discussion, but I will make sure they understand that, yes.
Any other discussion on? Are you doing them together or separate?
Why don't you do them separate?
All right, this is for Fabulous 50 Show alone, the first one. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make motion approve.
Mr. Dunn makes a motion to approve. Ms. Haynes second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion to accept the Fabulous 50 is approved. Seven, one. Seven, one absent. Next one is Backstage Performing Arts.
This is, Backstage Performing Arts is a group or a company that has used the auditorium here for several years. When we put their request for facility use into the formulas, it did come out to be quite a bit more than they've paid in the past. But they were, they are not a not-for-profit, so I'm not sure in the past how, I think that they haven't been charging at the door, even though they charge parents for a fee, I guess, for the performance. I'm not sure on all that. But as far as I know, they're not a not-for-profit. So they would fall into that 100% of the cost for the hours used. And their fee structure is on the back there. And again, it's quite a bit more than they have paid in the past, but it is in accordance with the formula and with your policies.
Do I have a motion?
Before you do a motion, one thing I would like to ask on this one is in your motion, if you would, I know they're going to probably look at another location. We don't want to keep this facility booked for the days that they have requested if they're not going to use this. So I would like to, for you to put in your motion that they have 30 days to verify that they're going to use it or it becomes null and void, what you're approving tonight. You understand what I'm saying? Because we're going to block out some days in whatever month this is for this facility. And if somebody else wanted to use it, we're going to tell them they can't use it because it's already been booked. Well, if they choose to go somewhere else, then I think that they can do that within 30 days and let us know.
Do I have a motion to accept that contract for use?
I think a motion to approve, but if they do not want the facility, they have to let us know in 30 days.
Mr. Tucker, I'll let you second. Mr. Dunn would already get started if that worked for you.
That's fine. I'm good with that. I couldn't hear it.
All right, I know. That's right. All right, you got a second? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carries to accept seven, zero. Next item is our standard request to declare the surplus library books at South Lincoln, Blanch. And library books and then leaps items at Blanch. Does anybody want to pull them out separate or have any issues or somebody give me, entertain me a motion to?
Don't move.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion to approve. I have a second. Any other, Ms. Haynes second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries seven, one absent. The next item is discussion consideration of proposed 2021, 2022 school calendar. Dr. Heath?
Yes, our, every year we put a calendar committee together that looks at the calendar for the following year. Usually I like to have the following year's calendar completed before the beginning of the current school year. COVID-19 sort of interrupted that, so we're a couple of months late, later than normal. But our committee worked, we had several meetings and they landed on what you see there as a recommendation. There aren't a whole lot of changes from the past, but there is one thing that's on yours. It's after May 20th. It's green on mine. It's yours in color too. The one thing that they would ask the board to consider, and you don't have to consider this tonight. It may be something you want to consider at a future meeting or even at the winter retreat. But they would ask that on Veterans Day, which we had a lot of discussion about Veterans Day, that the committee is recommending that the Board of Education pass a resolution allowing all veterans who currently work for Lincoln County Schools have Veterans Day off with pay, knowing that they're going to come to our services anyway at our schools. But give them that day off with pay and, you know, that came out of committee. We debated back and forth, do we have school on that day or not? A lot of systems, or some systems do, some systems do not, school systems. But we feel like it's a big day for our students because every student in our county participates in a Veterans Day service every year on that day. So it is a big day, but I thought that was a good recommendation coming out of that committee for you to consider at some point in time. But tonight, I am asking that you consider the calendar for approval.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the calendar.
Mr. Posey makes a motion, we approve the calendar for the coming school year 2021, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Daniel second. All in, or any other discussion on?
I'd like to ask that we put that on next month's agenda about the veteran stuff.
All I know is make sure if there's a way in scheduling that they look into the fall, middle school football. If there's a fall break, if there's an issue with it up front, just to discuss it now, not wait till we realize we've got a ballgame fall break if there's a way to?
For the calendar, okay.
Avoid that. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carries seven, one absent. Mr. Bradford, do the financial reports?
You have the financials. I'd be glad to answer any questions. If not, I just recommend acknowledging receipt of those attached financials.
I noticed we closed, we're just $30,000 negative in the cafeteria fund versus 60 something last month. So we made a little close there.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Mr. Posey makes a motion to accept. I have a second.
Second motion.
Mr. Dunn second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise?
Item 2A, we have a grant budget amendment for leaps getting in on the books. And then the second amendment's for Brad Luna. He collects laptop repair fees and he does those repairs in-house, saves us a lot of money. So it's budgeting some of those funds so he can fix machines. So I recommend approval of those two amendments.
It's all right, do them both together, correct?
Yes, sir.
Those are budget amendments. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Posey move approve. I have a second. Mr. Dunn second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise?
And that did include the 142 as well, right? And the last item, we surplus this more a while back, the high school lawnmower. And we got one bid for $525. And I believe if y'all award this bid, that if you also incorporate that those funds go back to the school, I believe. Because I think they purchased it out of their funds. So that is my recommendation.
Do I have a motion to approve that bid? Ms. Haynes makes a motion. Mr. Posey second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carries? Points of information discussion? Dr. Daniel, again, we'd like to condolences and passing you, mom. I mean, I appreciate you being here tonight with everything that's going on with the COVID year. And Ms. Granny Ruth has been a blessing at South Lincoln School from. and Ms. Granny Ruth has been a blessing at South Lincoln School for many, many years, and we, we really appreciated her service for the county and what she's done and meant to those kids at South Lincoln.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Posey and Mr. Tucker did do the TSBA delegate assembly, uh, virtual. And then, Mr. Dunn did his new board member orientation of TSBA Thursday and Friday of last week.
Alright, Mr. Posey and Mr. Tucker were, was our TSBA delegate? Did y'all get extra money?
Uh, it's, uh, it was pretty uneventful. Uh, the online version of the delegate assembly was, uh, painful.
Well, there'll be a little something extra in you.
Thank you.
Any peach cobbler.
I got apples.
And, uh, and Mr. Dunn attended the first two-day orientation for TSBA, how was that?
It was good, very informative.
Yep. But we appreciate Mr. Bradford with the pies that we got, accommodated us. Even though Mr. Fowler's trying to hijack, not, he, he sells them, he apples, he just says he don't sell them, but he's, he's, there he's number one seller.
He said you and one other guy's all fair and kind.
You can't believe a man that runs around in a yellow little pool pop-up. But we appreciate everything, and, uh, has anybody got anything else?
That's it.
Uh, November eleventh, uh, will be Veterans Day, so I don't know what the activities with COVID in mind, we'll just have to see and play that beard.
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody, and nothing else, the meeting is adjourned, thank y'all.